Welcome, everybody, to the OSAI regular meeting agenda on Wednesday, July 16, 2025. As our custom and tradition, we always start with a prayer. I'm hoping to go. And a few deceased Osages, too. God.
Hi, 13, 13, what's up? What can be used here? They're going to say, ah, how that Kistum are. They'd say, well, they, ah, see, they, ah, probably have a, ah, like, here they come to tell you that Kistum, ah, here, don't, ah, tell you. They're going to say, ah, how they, ah, what are you, ah, like, she? Ah, okay, it's, ah, like, she, ah, who asked, ah, like, she, ah, she, ah, clearly, ah, come, ah, for a cure, say.
This land, this gift you gave us, give us the strength, the courage, and the fortitude to make good decisions. I pray for our children, Lord, and help our Osage children. And give them a home that we might protect it forever, and that they might lean from life and renewed life, and that we might continue to be who we are as Osages. I ask all these things in your name. Amen. You want me to read that? Chairman, this, read the deceased Osages. Michael Pappen, Oregon. Joanne Knapp, Phoenix, Arizona. Randy Best in Missouri. Amy Kirby in Pauska, Oklahoma. Got to say that. He's got to do that. That's announcements, announcements of the council. The people that next door that used to be the referral department, they moved, moved down to downtown the hospital or a clinic, to a clinic. So their, the space is still open. I would imagine this, they won't, but they've still got a bunch of stuff in there that can be moved now. It's up to the council what y'all want to do with it, or what used to be ours, everything.
What are our options?
It's up to the council. Also, the item on the, the annual election, I talked with Councilwoman Irwin, and we, we scratched that until September. As I told you all in the last September, that I would do it for one year. It was open there. So we scratched, we scratched that.
Point of order. We're required to do that. It's not, we're required to have this election of Chair and Second Chair on the first meeting of July. This is the first meeting of July.
It's on the agenda. They also got a call from the OSAI nation. People that are plugging, plugging the wells and, not plugging wells, shooting, the plugging department, Tim Goodfoss is in charge of the selling of the pipe. And he sold, he sold quite a few, quite a few of them. Yeah, some of it was hot, radioactive, but he managed to sell some to a firm in Arkansas. $12,000. $12,000. But when the deal was finalized, the money will go into our S510 account. And he's, he's also, he really sells some of them. So they're taking, taking a while here going on.
I'm curious, did they sell that working stream pipe? Or was that just the hot pipe they sold, $12,000?
If it wasn't the hot pipe, radioactive.
What did they sell for $12,000? Was it that working stream pipe?
He didn't tell me what they sold.
Who, who, who was telling?
Tim Goodfoss.
Goodfoss, okay, I'll ask him.
Call him, I'll give you a sell that.
Okay, I'll call him.
Row call.
Councilman Bigwood.
Present.
Second Chair, Ashawah.
Present.
Councilwoman Irwin.
Here.
Councilman Redcorn.
Here.
Chairman Red Eagle.
Here.
Councilman Rebar.
Chair, present.
Councilman Chappell.
Here.
Councilman Wallace.
Present.
David Corn.
Thank you, thank you, Lacy. Superintendent, glad you're here. Good morning. Got the floor.
I was about to read into the records, Superintendent's report for July 16, 2025. For oil, gas, and water royalties for May 2025 production, total wealth produced was 209,791.65 barrels, and the revenue is $2 million, $25,567.92. Total gas produced was 151,943 MCS, and the royalties paid was $62,677.80. Total gas liquids produced was 89,178 gallons, royalties paid was $3,862.40. The total tank bottoms produced was 257.66 barrels, and the royalties paid was $699.21. The total water usage royalty paid was $100, and there was zero collected for waste disposal royalty. For rentals and bonuses, for oil, gas rentals paid was $10,346.20. For oil and gas bonuses paid was $8,300. For rentals, there's $500 collected for saltwater easement rental. There was $2,700 collected for late payment charges, there was $3,670.90. For other minerals, APAC produced 27,124.19 tons and paid $35,044.45 in royalties for May. Andy Creed Crusher produced 11,266.5 tons and paid $12,843.81 in royalties for April. For Burbank Materials, they produced $21,516, excuse me, $21,516.05 tons and paid $28,186.30 in royalties for April. Wilson Rand produced zero and paid zero in royalties. And Rocky Banks produced 144 cubic yards and paid $120 in royalties, that's for April, for March, April, and May. For Schmidt Brothers, the total produced was 320 cubic yards and paid $240, and that's for May as well. And for total wells, those being similar to one that's been on, that most recent reports, the total was 16,464 wells capable of production. For oil, there's 11,943. For gas, 1,349. For gas easements, there was five. For oil and gas, 114, there was 492 TA. 72 CO2 injection wells, water and gas injection was 51. Saltwater disposals easements, there was 130. Saltwater disposal without any easement, there were 942. For injection wells, there's 1,254. For injections with easements, there were eight. And for water supply wells, 102. Water supply wells without easements, or excuse me, with easements, there was two. For approved permits, there was 35 permits approved. Of those, 14 were workover permits, 18 were plugging permits, three were emergency plugging permits, there were zero emergency workovers, and there were zero drilling permits. And there, there were no new drilling reports received for the month. That concludes Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent. We had a, we had a meeting workshop. Some people might not have been there. Some of you were. Superintendent was there, and Dawson was there, I believe. Environmental specialist, right? And Superintendent had a, had a very good comment during that meeting. I know it was a closed meeting, but the words that he said were kind of rang true. More or less, as far as our, our timing of the production in wells being drilled, you know, wells are being turned back on, and, and we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot by comparing negative, 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 being negative about them. Say, hey, we complain about this, complain about that, mad about this, and mad about that. We're shooting ourselves in the foot by doing that. This is live right now, it's being recorded. We need to start putting things in our newsletter, putting things on the website. We got it down to 44 days in our permits, maybe even less if the plan or appeal was waived. That's down to 15 days. So that's, that's a big improvement, in my, in my opinion. That's the best improvement I've seen since I've been on the council. I've been on several councils since 2010, and that's a long time ago, man. So I just reminded the council, you know, positive, 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 you know, it's a good thing to be. Things can get better, and, and can't get too much worse than this right now. Oh, yeah, yeah. So I want to remind the council about that. Councilman Rebar.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Superintendent. I guess I'll start with the last comment about the surface owners waiving the appeal period, is that possible?
There are limited circumstances in which it may be possible. It would also take acquiescence or agreement with the mineral council and potentially the nation as well. If all the interested parties waive their, waive the appeal period ahead of time, that would be something that I could transmit to solicitors, and that may be something that's possible.
Okay, well, if that's the case, I would think that maybe the mineral council would probably categorically waive that for any application, and I think the nation would support us on that. So it would come down to just the surface owner, to each certain surface owner. Some would cooperate, some wouldn't. So that's good to know. I think, I think maybe we should reach out to the nation and see if maybe they could join us in categorically waiving that appeal opportunity. Regarding your report, I noticed that we're down 101,000 barrels for the month of May from the month of April. April and the months before that, we've been averaging about 10,000 barrels per day production. But May, we only had 7,000 barrels. So we're losing 3,372 barrels per day, which is about, if I'm not mistaken, about what the Burbank contributes. I was wondering if maybe, does this report exclude the Burbank, or is there some other reason that you can think of why our production would drop by 100,000 barrels?
Some of it may have to do with the, the reporting isn't always in on time, so we use what data we have. A lot of times, some of it will be tabulated on to the next month. We don't have it by the date that the reports are prepared. There haven't, I have been working with the, with the operators out of Burbank. They have expressed concerns with getting certain permits in, and they've asked us to prioritize certain ones, and we're going to continue to do that to keep their system working as smoothly as they can. And it's going to be an ongoing conversation with them. They have expressed concern, given what they're doing with the EOR, that turnaround right now may not be what they need. So we're trying to work through some additional options with them to try and expedite or give attention to the ones on their end, the ones they've submitted. If they tell us it's non-prioritized, prioritize, de-prioritize those ones, and maybe give priority to some of the other ones. And right now, any of the orphan wells, those are kind of at the back of our list, maybe related to active production along with, uh, work.
Appreciate all that, but I was really wanting over that 100,000 barrels to be lost. If you could, you know, look into that and let our staff know, that's a significant amount of production. One third of our production is gone, and I just wonder what happened to it. I also noticed that the, the Sarah well, or the water waste royalty, has been zero for two months in a row. Do you know if that well is temporarily out of operation over at the, the Sarah White plant?
Yes, after the last one, after the last meeting, I inquiry about that, I was told that the facility office is only partially operational. At the moment, they're not using the disposal. We're continuing to have conversations with them about when and where, or when and how they're going to bring it back into production or into use. But at my, at present, I don't think it's being, it's my understanding it's not being utilized.
Well, about three weeks ago, I asked our staff to reach out to you, just so that each one of us individually don't bother you with some questions, to ask about the discrepancy between the number of lessees that we report on the lease status report. In 2021, as I reported to you, there was 2,000, or 226 lessees for the 2021 lessee reports, which we have on our website. Oh, God. Then we received the reports for 2022 and 2023 at the same time. 2022 only had 55 lessees. 2023 had only 48. So I'd like, first of all, to know, how many, how many lessees do we have total?
Presently, it would be 22 and 300. I don't have the exact number that's off my head.
Close to 300, maybe?
It's closer to 300, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and then, but, but for 2021, only 226 reported. And then, that drops down to 55. We're losing 150 more, 55 out of 300 lessees. And then, the last year that we reported, 23, was only 48 out of 300. So I was wondering why that is, and I'd also like to know whether we might expect a 2024 lease status. I actually use these. We have somebody that made it here today to talk about a issue, and it was really helpful for me to go back and look at this particular track, to find out who operates it, how many wells are on it, where the wells were. So we council members use, use this data occasionally, not frequently, but occasionally. So it is important to, so if you, you know, could answer that, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, and I, we identified the way we had been doing it wasn't the most efficient for this past year, what I have done. In the past, what it was going was basically being routed to subsurface, and they don't have an immediate use for it, so they weren't prioritizing. Some key with our staff would review them, but it was kind of put in the file cabinet. My plan on that, and what I have allocated my staff to do is on the intake, when, when the mail comes in, have staff scan that into our systems, so we have a digital copy, a machine. They route one copy of it to me, so I can review it. And the other one, the physical copy still goes to subsurface, but we've got them available now digitally. And those are ones that I can certainly share with you guys, and doing it proactively now, so that those don't, don't just end up in a file cabinet somewhere, not being utilized.
So the lessees sent the reports in, but you just haven't put them, you haven't forgiven them, you haven't scanned them to give us.
Historically, what it had in part, my tenure, was that they would put them in there. Now, when you guys asked them, they would go back and digitize them, provide you guys a copy, or they could scan.
And we asked for all of them.
Yeah.
And if, if that's not officially requested, I am officially requesting a copy of all the lease status reports from 2021 today, in the digital format as possible, like you've been doing in the past, because it's critical information for us to develop our mineral state.
Yeah, I provided the copies for, I think, 2022, 2023, and 2024, those are the ones that we're currently digitizing, or we've been digitizing. I can certainly get those to you guys.
Okay, and the $500,000 amount that was available for some type of data that Councilman Redcorn brought up to you, to us, and to you in one of our recent meetings, could some of that $500,000 be used for this purpose?
I don't know that we would need to, like I said, like, has been identified, there's not a, it's not an insurmountable, insurmountable amount of records that we received, those I had staff allocate to scan us. I think most of them, at this point, have been digitized. Like I said, the 2024 ones, as they were coming in, we were scanning those, so I can probably have those over this afternoon. Everything else, I've already had staff go back and scan this. There's an issue in that, we haven't sent out letters to all the lessees, just with staff that we have right now, we're trying to prioritize active production. That hasn't been at the top of the list, to get a letter out to enforce them, or mandate that all the operators get those in.
Councilman Rebar.
Thank you, Chair.
Councilman Rick.
Thank you, Chair. I, too, look at that production volume, and it's really dropped. I was going to ask our geologist sitting over there, we're at 7,000 slumber a month now. Where are we standing? Are your thoughts as far as production, and are we headed into, doing the calculation, that's going to take a big hit on our payment, our quarterly payment, if this keeps up? So anyway, I just feel like, if you got a comment, 7,000, a little under Mr. Rebar did, too. Thank you.
Well, I think that's, we're below that, what we were nine years ago. We're a bunch of them, and we're in that decline, and I think what I'm seeing is the decline is primary and secondary oil. Of course, we don't see any, any of those numbers broken out anymore in production. We don't get, you know, all we get is the total barrel numbers. And so, yeah, I don't see anything. I mean, we were told then last week that nothing's changed, you know, and there's what, how many drilling permits, two or three that are broke? So, no, I, I don't see that changing on, on the primary and secondary side. And when you're talking about lease status reports, those are so important. They used to go to all field man at one time, and they would check and make sure everything's correct on those forms, because the engineers don't have time to do that. And so that's where, you know, they would make sure all the operators in there are going to return it in the form. That's not the end.
I stood up for Chair. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Lynn. In that, in that vein, just a comment here, and I appreciate you. I went to the meeting on the NEPA that was called, I'm not sure who called it, I didn't know, I just showed up, took notes. But your petroleum engineer was in. Since we're really going downhill in production, I'd rather hear from, not the NEPA guy, but what's the plan to help us get back on track and get production? So just some thoughts, I mean, I'd love to hear what the FBI come up with, and hope we can do work together. We'd love to sit and talk. I was a little discouraged, and just to be honest, you know, hearing what I'm reading on a national level, the NEPA and the current administration's super, super desire to back off NEPA and get, get going on production, and we're still getting sold this, here's your NEPA documents, here's the EIS, here's the EA, here, and, but I'm not reading that national. So just some comments, if we can work together, I mean, if there's something that really doesn't need to be, I'd like to explore it, you know. I did circle your recommendations that day, but, you know, just then again, on a general scale, I'd like to hear from your petroleum engineer. Is he just involved in plugging, or do we have a vision of how we can get out of this hole, get back to, from 7,000 back up to 15,000 barrels of that?
At present, he's not working on plugging at all. That's going through IESE, the Indian Energy Service Center. He's solely focused on active production. We have received additional drilling permits in the past two weeks. Those will get moved through. The last EA we received, for the last set of drilling permits, we were able to get the EA done, I think, in a matter of two weeks, and it was negligible. The rest of the process takes an equal amount of time, so it wasn't holding us up. We're still having to comply with NEPA, again, unless and until Congress exempts us from it, or we get clear instruction from the administration that we can circumvent, or we're excused from doing NEPA, we'll continue to do so. Right now, it hasn't been an entrance. We're working with the operators, we will continue to prioritize active production, getting our operators what they need to remain in business. Right now, I mean, the big impediment is that we have limited staff, and there's a hiring freeze that's continued until October. So it's just, we've been told to do more, or we're giving off, or the, the challenge of doing more with less, and we'll continue.
That was my experience at Old Town, you know, I mean, every year, they were laying people off.
Absolutely.
At one date, our big boss came in, 75 million, we got cut. And that, you can't do it in paper clips and napkins, that he's telling us, people are going to go, and that happens every year. So you made us real buzz, man, get out there, make yourself relevant, or you're out the door. So I think, you know, if we can, we're getting meaner, you know, and I'm not freak, but us, too, we need to join forces, try to get that production up. I like what our geologist said, we got to get back to 15,000 barrels a day. What's that going to look like? Is it, is it all this marginal production? It's kind of what you said on meeting, I, I think that's a great start, and also, there's an opportunity out there, like, and we got some geologists coming in with some, you know, with these new rigs kind of fading away, we're hoping we can maybe jump back out there and start exploring some of these bigger areas. Okay, thank you, sir.
I can't get the kumbaya out yet. You're missing 100,000 barrels a day, and we're not stopping this meeting, going out and finding out where it's at. Since I came out of that branch of minerals, field supervisor, guys that, you can, I'm getting tired of. I know what should have happened, somebody should have identified and been able to tell Captain Rebar where it went. And if it's going to be a catch of next month, well, then I want to interest off of it, too. Because the whole idea is that, that's a paper trail you're talking about. It's not the producer out there making that, they're just trying to get their reports in. And Bill's right, except for one thing, you don't have the drilling to save us. The chairman, I appreciate this, it could get worse. Been on these councils at the lowest price of oil, and you think it's a bad, now wait to laugh. Secondly, you're waiting on the Trump administration to go in on federal lands? You're going to wait on them for a trigger? You don't work for Trump, you work for the OSAI shareholders. I've had nine superintendents, been here too damn long, and all I got to say is, you could better find 100,000 barrels today, or at least be able to point where it's at. And if it's not on the paper or the report, then it's still hiding around in your office running around. And the only other reason is because we went through this, when I worked there, you had the report, you had your accountant look through it, once they figured out, you'd take it to the field man, and he would go out and see why. Because this producer showed that he paid in on this money. Thank you, gentlemen.
Councilwoman Irwin, got the floor.
Chair, do you think that maybe that we're not getting everything that we should be entitled to, from how we're doing, like, do our workers there with the royalty stuff? I mean, there's a breakdown somewhere. I, I don't know, that's an awful lot of oil to count for, whether or not they got the reports. I realize they had $3,000 or something in light fees and penalties, but there has to be a breakdown somewhere else, other than those reports.
My knee hurt so bad, I hit this table. They should look at me, no sympathy. But I'm queasy over it. I mean, you cannot miss that kind of, without being able to walk over and find it.
That's true. And where it is, I don't know.
So we're going to, what, show 13,000 next month? I like the idea of 15,000, but let's get in reality. Until we mow over all this federal action, we ain't going to get there. And if they're going to save their position, better think about what's next for us. Thank you.
All right, through.
My legs still.
Councilman Rick.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, so it's 10,000 barrels a day, 100,000 total.
Okay, so that's 10,000 a month.
We're losing 7,000 barrels a day, but I don't think we've lost them. I think it's like what Superintendent said, some of the reports didn't make it in time to make the list. And if that's going to be the case, and somebody typing this report up, used to type in 300,000 barrels for a month, and then one day, 200 for the month? It ought to be, somebody ought to be like, there's something wrong here. But if that's the case, and that's understandable, if, with all these different, all the guys that need like Coffee Bill, Stenoff, Cattle Bill, all of them sending in their numbers, if one of them didn't make it for the cut, for the deadline for this report, there ought to be enough time to at least point it out, that, by the way, this didn't include coffee lists for the month. Or maybe, this is, this number is real close to what the Burbank bill is. This could just be the Burbank production. This could just be the Burbank production didn't make it to the, I don't know. But there ought to be an explanation. I, I don't think that, I don't honestly think the pool just didn't happen or just disappeared. I just think it is a reporting issue, a clerical, I think it's a clerical matter. And it's significant enough that some of us would like an explanation. That's why, thank you.
If I could tailor up that comment, I just want to, if it's a fact, production. And then the result is payment amount. There's going to be some pretty upset shareholders. And I'm going to tell you that my experience in this seat, we're the only ones that captured that response from them. And yeah, I've said this before, there's big decisions made in the nation. But to me, they don't have, there's no one to answer to. And we're the ones that got to answer for that. As a, as an elected body, that's been my kind of little bit of concern, making big decisions over there. But no one, no accountability. So this decision, that decision, so we, we're in a big struggle every time we try to make a decision. So I, I, you know, we, we got to sit down and talk, try to get around that or to me, that's, that's a big problem. We got a superintendent here, we're ready to roll, but I don't know what they're going to say over here. I really don't. They might pull a stop to it all. I don't know. I'm probably getting ready to hear one on our continental. You know, we make decisions, decisions, decisions here. We want a hold on this and see what we can do with it. And now I'm about ready to hear, let's plug it up. You know, I don't know. We'll, we'll hear it then. But just wanted to say that much.
That's one of our.
Mr. Superintendent, the late payment charge was three thousand six hundred seventy dollars and ninety cents. Is that people getting their information to you like?
Correct.
I mean, when they get it to you like, if you emulate those figures and give it to us, this information is given to us like and then get on the record, say official report that you're giving us.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm going to speak with staff now. Someone annotated from one of our larger offer, or one of our larger purchasers hasn't submitted. If it's not included, if it's omitted, just to notate that, put an asterisk.
And what's that late payment?
The interest goes towards, I have to.
You should have asked.
I have to revisit with staff. I think the late payments end up going to, or the late charges end up going to the general treasury of the United States. All interest goes towards the mineral state. At least that's my understanding of this idea.
How fair is that?
I wouldn't.
Councilman.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. The, I learned that a company that's approached us multiple times for forest based leases and concessions for forest base has an entity they've created. And they have applied for ten class six wells at the EPA. And their website indicates they have seventy-five thousand acres of forest based lease here in our mineral state with an eye on another seventy-five thousand, that they have a partner who they did not identify. And I think I'm going to do that is, but the EPA has received ten class six permits for Osage County. And I think the last time you were here, I asked you if there'd been any class six permit filed on one thirty-nine forms. And you said no. Has that changed since the last time I asked you?
I have not received any notice or any notice of notice being filed with the EPA and I, my knowledge, we have not received any one thirty-nines.
Okay, so then I would like to formally state to you that it's my understanding that in order for a class six permit to be approved by the EPA, I think they need to have forest based leases. But, or at least before they start injecting CO2. And I just want you to know that this body, it would be the governing body to grant a lease or the right to use our forest base. And we've not done so. So if somebody's approached you for one thirty-nine for the drill, a well for that purpose. They do not have a lease, a valid lease to do so. And I just want to reiterate that. So that's all I have, Chairman.
Anybody else?
Look out. Councilman. Yeah, I, I think that's a great comment. I'd like to follow up on anything below ground is, is the Osage. When we went to DC, we were confirmed by Mrs. Waller, who was appointed by the current administration that Stitt's desire to implement statewide regulation is exempt from the Osage. She gave us that word. We fought hard for that. So, you know, they're continually trying to pick it. I thought we had a good conversation with them. Our attorney at the time said, ran over and confirmed, I need to see that in writing. So they shot that to us. So we need to protect that. We want to protect that. And I'm not sure how the nation thinks about that. I really don't. No one's talked to me. But we fought as a mineral council. We fought hard to get that in place. So, thank you, Chairman.
Your continental's only a little business superintendent. If possible, could you turn here and be, and get on the conversation?
Absolutely.
We'll send for you when that comes out. It'll be a while yet. Next one, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is Bureau of Trust and Administration, George Carrey. Break yourselves comfortable ladies.
Good morning. Thank you for letting us be here. My name's Troy. Here, I'm the FTO and this is Stephanie Davis. She's our trust accounts administrator. So today we were going to talk about the June quarterly payment. It was four thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. And if shareholders, if you're aware of any shareholders that did not receive their payments, they need to call our office as soon as possible and update their accounts and then we can get their payments back out to them. Our telephone number is nine one eight two eight seven five seven nine one. The trust beneficiary call center is also available. That's a toll free number and that's eight 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 six seven eight six eight three six. Their hours are ten AM to five thirty PM Central Standard Time. They are closed on Saturdays and Sundays now.
Any questions from the council? Can you comment your question for the council? Thank you, George.
Okay, we, I, if I can interrupt just real quick. We had, I was absent at the last meeting, but I understand there were some questions from members of the council.
Councilwoman.
Yes, ma'am. Just on the the identification, I've heard some certain numbers be talked about from executive that I don't think our council has and it's over a number of Osage shareholders who were sending this check to. And the non-Osage breakdown of those numbers, because I see one quoted in the Osage Nation News. I just want to know. Did they get it from, they had to get it from you guys. If we could be available to know that ourselves.
I'm not aware of that. Maybe we can talk later and we can, we can discuss what information they're referring to and then.
Yes, ma'am. It was over where the chief had mentioned X amount of Osage shareholders at five thousand and something. I think that number's a little higher. Last time I looked on our.
Five thousand six hundred last night.
Seventy-one, something of that nature. I just want to make sure those numbers are right. But thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Chairman.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Yeah. Thank you all for all of you. Have a good day. Anybody here from the next on the agenda is a treasurer report. Anybody here from the Osage Nation? Treasurer. We got a, we got a set here that everybody got. So if you want to look at it, have any questions or anything about it. Only thing I can tell you is to call them up, I guess.
What did we get?
Just from the treasurer. I believe so. Everybody want to look it over or if not, we can carry on.
I don't know, but I'm getting a little, they never show up. I mean, you know.
You catch them out of that.
Uh, we pay in direct cost, don't we, in that harvest salary? But you never shows up?
Don't hear them. Well, on Facebook, they pass to CDAs.
Okay.
Budgetings. In that case, we'll, we'll attend you. Number B on it.
Wait a minute, I've got, can I say something?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm about this annual election of chair. I just thought we did it every July. I talked to Mr. Reddigal and he said that when he took position as chair, they said he could have it for a year from September to September. I couldn't recall that, but I'm, you all need to know that. So if that, you know, you need to make the decision on what you want to do about it. But, you know, I know what he told me and, you know, I have no reason not to believe it, but I, I need for you all to recall that too, please.
Chairman. Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Thanks for bringing that up again. It's in our bylaws that we are to elect a chairperson and a vice chairperson at the first meeting of every year, of every July. And today is the first meeting of July. It would have been July fourth, but that was all federal holiday. We didn't have that meeting. So this year, it's today. And you're correct that when Chairman Reddigal accepted the nomination last July, he said, I'll do it for one year. Right? And that meeting got delayed. It, it was, it did not happen in July. There was several reasons why, because of delay, delay. We finally had that meeting sometime later. But when he said that he did it for a year, we all assumed it was for one year term. I'm not going to do this. Don't expect me to do it the next time. That's the way it was interpreted. So we are supposed to elect a chairperson and a vice chairperson today. That's what we're supposed to do. And to, and to postpone it for months. It's one thing to postpone till next week because we're in a time crunch or something. But, or, or some of us couldn't be here today and we'd like for all of us to be here on such an important vote. But, but to just say, you know, at the beginning of the fall, we'll do it sometime this fall, that's not acceptable. And I just want to reiterate that. Thank you, Chairman.
How does the rest of you feel?
I mean, what's on it? We'll go on, continue on with new business. Great Horn and Owl, LL, LLL, assignments of saltwater disposal. Great Horn and Owl, number B on the new business.
They're, they're not here. They're the ones that the superintendent made reference to the last meeting. The email, the legal part in there, the email that you need to paperwork.
Yes.
I didn't know this before, you know, step outside.
So that are like some sort of fly by night company?
That was the left one.
Couldn't help it, couldn't help it.
Well, you know, they're not outstanding.
Page eleven, it's the first page of your new business.
I have it.
Thank you, Chairman. If I'm not mistaken, we've seen some correspondence in the letters that our staff sends us, the BIA letters, where this entity, the Horn and Owl, whatever it is, has received assignments from somebody else.
I said about yesterday.
Yeah, I just saw this yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, some tango, yeah.
And so they are new, so it's a new entity taking over some properties. And if I'm not mistaken, they just want an easement on an existing well. And if we had the legal to, in order to, to recite it in a resolution, I would be in favor of granting an easement for a saltwater disposal, saltwater disposal well. It's apparently something they need to, in order to assist them in developing all the gas. We're all in favor of that, we want that in. So I, I would be in favor of acting on that with the written information that's being provided to our staff.
Your motion on the floor.
I'll second it, sir.
Is that your motion, Councilman Reed?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any discussion?
Chairman. We should recite the dollar amounts, three hundred dollars.
Councilman Waller.
Yes, from the southwest quarter, thirty-three twenty-five six, well number one dash thirty-three. I just asked Chief of Staff, we'll put them both together, in the northeast quarter of section seventeen twenty-four six, well number two dash seventeen. That is three hundred dollars per year.
All men make motion to reflect that.
Is that for well?
Yes, ma'am.
It's an easement, right?
It's an easement, sir.
Okay.
On, on both of them.
Okay.
And since they're not going to different companies, one resolution.
Okay.
And just for the record, those I sent out yesterday did include two easement assignments. But those are not the same legal, given those.
Are they grand orders?
They were already approved for two I sent out yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion?
Based on what Ms. Hudson just said, was, does that require our, a resolution from us to approve the assignment?
The way the superintendent worded it last meeting was kind of like he wanted us to give a blanket type to approve assignments on the saltwater disposal.
On trade first.
Let's vote on the motion that I told before. I think we must talk about that after that.
Be my suggestion. What were your comments?
That he wanted like a blanket type one for after this or in the future, I'm assuming because they get.
There are no blankets. Any more discussion? Here you go. Call for the vote.
Councilman Big Horse?
This is on just this?
Yeah, two of them.
Yes.
Second Chair, Tish Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Chairman Reddigal?
Yes.
Councilman Reevar?
Yes.
Councilman Shabeford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Councilor. Number C on the new business, development of Reservoir Hill, David, Dave Keener, Mr. Keener, President. Development of Reservoir Hill, Mr. Keener, President. I guess we can just scrap them. Councilman Reevar. Councilman Reevar.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'm not here to represent them or not, but if you'll remember, we received correspondence from that individual. And I'll just say for, for the headline owners that might be listening and curious. The gentleman is familiar with the Reservoir Hill, Tulsa, which straddles Osage County. It's a kind of a historical site, not, not officially designated, but it's, it's a landmark. There is small gas production on it that on the Osage mineral estate side. But this particular individual wrote to us out of concern that a housing addition was going to be built on this beautiful hill. And he was in opposition to that. He was going to bring it to our attention and he did by email. They brought our attention that this is going on and that he was opposed to it, thinking we would be opposed to it since it's on our mineral state, in such a beautiful area. We would hate to see it developed fully with a housing addition. And I think he was going to address and, and show us what the developers' plans were for that. And so just for the public's information, that's, that was a purpose, if I'm not mistaken.
Was it around thirty-six? Was it around thirty-six?
Section twenty-seven of twenty north, twelve east. And there is some oil wells on that property. And they aren't active oil wells. Some of them are shut in, but it's an active lease. So I was prepared to advise him that I doubt that this development would be able to, be able to continue without interfering with those wells. be able to continue without interfering with those wells. And that we certainly wouldn't let them be plugged if they're hitting oil production. So I, I was prepared to comment. I didn't think he had much to worry about. But that's a substance matter of why I think they're going to be here for anybody listening who's wanting to know.
Is that there, uh, is that there where that big water, water tank you've got on that hill?
It's kind of there, but in the same comment, I would say, it's already looking at it on the, uh, just west of the Casino Bridle Path and all those guys on that hill. At first, they were asking us to plug them. Uh, but, uh, also, this is going to be down by Anderson School and those other places.
I, I think, I, I work with, I feel so, also, I think I read that meeting. Okay. Anybody else?
No.
Councilman Reborn?
Yeah, thank you. It just brought my attention that it wasn't going to be a housing development. It was going to be a, a medical facility.
Yeah.
A clinic that the city of Tulsa's already approved. So we may be, uh, this is something that we're going to continue to research. And because of that, I did do some research on my own. And like I told the superintendent just a little while ago, I used these lease tax reports to do this. And this is a plot of all those wells on that hill that I got off and I, you know, from our lease tax reports, that's why it's so important. Uh, data is important to us. And I can't believe they lock it up and keep it from us. And at some point, we're going to have, uh, a Popeye moment where we've got all we can stand and can't stand the war. But that's what this is. And the city of Tulsa may have, may have, may have approved the project, but we're not going to let it plug out all over. And so it's something that we need to keep on our radar. That's it.
Council, Councilwoman Irwin?
All right, so the city of Tulsa's already approved a medical clinic or building or whatever they're going to put there. Do you think that's the reason why they're here trying to get a, uh, two fourteen lease? Do we have the legal on that where they want it? I don't know.
I don't know. Guess we'll find out after a while.
Okay, I just want to know if anybody has the legal.
That's my words, uh, for some of our reservation. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah.
If it's on our reservation, they're not only going to have to be permitted, but in these cases here, if they want to encompass any of that well, they're going to pay for it. Just like we do ODOT, just like we do any other federal action, FEMA. And that's another thing, we need to look a little broader on how we handle that in case of, uh, more of it showing up. And see, until we get to zinc, you really don't have a lot. But we need to be looking at that also because they're going to give that back to the city of Tulsa. Kaiser and, uh, the company.
Anybody else got any questions or comments? Eric Dunn and, uh, number D on the, uh, new business, Mineral Council? City of Tulsa, two fourteen lease, Paul Zachary. Zachary, make yourself comfortable.
Thank you, sir.
This is it, isn't it?
I don't know.
I'll just go ahead and ask, is this part of the project that was brought up for forty?
No, sir, but I think I can assist, probably, in...
You are getting...
Yes. Paul Zachary. Yes, sir. Oh, I introduced myself.
I probably...
Beautiful pictures.
Very good. My name is Paul Zachary. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works for the City of Tulsa. Uh, and, uh, I'm here today, uh, I was here many years ago to the Mineral Council on other projects that we have in Osage County.
You're Paul in the grant, that's why I saw you.
Okay. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman and Councilors, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. Um, my intent, um, and I think Lacy's probably gulping hard over there when I handed out a forty-two page handout. Um, that's not my intent to, she told me five, ten, fifteen minutes. So the pictures are here for us to establish, and I've numbered the pages. And this is a, when I hand out a presentation, everybody start flipping pages before I go. So if, if we can go back to, uh, the, the front sheet of it, the reason we're here is we have, can you find it? It's a, look for a PDF file, we'll have this.
Sorry, my eyes are bad, I cannot see.
Do you, is this just going to be the only page, or do you see going out, uh, farther?
No, sir, this project will terminate at Pine. We have already built an overlay, just did work. We didn't do any excavation work on the other projects, but we've gone thirty through West Avenue, Apache, and also Edison around. So, uh, is it reading the memory stick?
No. Will you pull it out?
This goes by Carter Smoke Shop all the way past Gilcrees and first stoplight to the right, you're done.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't hit the King property yet. Did you all purchase that property next to the Gilcrees?
We did the, the Temple property, it's on Newton. Uh, the Temple property we did not, that's on the north, that's on the southwest corner of Newton and Gilcrees Museum Road, and that's still in five. Yes, sir, thank you.
There, PDZ memory stick, going down.
Ben.
Do you see it? Chairman?
It's the second.
This one had any product on us? And it, uh, not the power of...
No, that wasn't one.
No, it's actually four blocks in, uh, four Tulsa City blocks into our reservation. But I know the property well, it's right here. There's body of, uh, food line.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Zachary.
All right, very good. Well, on the front, uh, Gilcrees Museum Road from Admiral to Pine. Um, Admiral to Edison is in Tulsa County. Edison up to Pine, uh, is in Osage County. Uh, we are looking at roadway improvements, safety improvements that we've been dealing with. Uh, have people been walking on that two-lane road, uh, going down to the commercial center of the neighborhoods. We have drainage, we have a side path that we're doing. We are connecting the Katy Trail down by Admiral. And we're bringing it all the way up to Pine, which we have already on our side done, uh, side pack, done a sidewalk and bicycle trails. Um, we are looking at developing almost eight miles of trails on the, on the Gilcrees Museum property, uh, about four hundred and fifty acres of that. And we will be back here as we do that later.
Chairman.
Okay. Um, we're, we are doing, uh, stormwater infrastructure, uh, retaining walls, screening walls, and water line. So on page two, uh, the project construction cost, we're looking at about twenty-five million dollars. Uh, the design has been done by Penn Associates. The construction, uh, we have not engaged the contractor at this time, that's to be determined. The project description, uh, just some information on it. It is funded totally by the City of Tulsa General Obligation Bonds, approved in three different phases. We did a conceptual plan, uh, back in twenty thirteen and twenty nineteen. And in twenty twenty-three, we got our construction funding for this project. So this has been in the plan for, uh, over, well, in excess of twelve years, uh, even before this. Final construction plans were in twenty-three, the election. As I said, Tulsa County is Admiral to Edison, Osage County is Edison to Pine. So on sheet three, uh, Tulsa County, uh, Admiral to Edison, we're going to be doing pavement rehabilitation. There is no change in curb locations. We did have to acquire four homes, and I will show you those in just momentarily. Uh, one on the west side, three on the east side. The roadway will remain a four-lane, uh, curb and gutter section in this area. But we are going to do the addition of a side path. And the ten-foot side path, the reason we want to do that is we want to get the bicycles. Uh, if you've driven in this area, the driveways are not lined up, QuickTrip, Bronz, uh, McDonald's, all that in there. Um, we want to be crossing a real trail that we're going to be able to mark, and people will be able to anticipate people crossing in there. Uh, the sidewalk between the ramps and then connecting to Katy Trail, uh, that's the existing. In the Osage County portion, Edison to Pine, safety improvements are the biggest driver and the biggest cost items in this area. Uh, we are going to do an improved super two. Uh, we have done that, uh, did that with Secretary Chief Arjay Walker back when he was in the transportation area and Osage County Commission. We would install the water lines, they would build, uh, the roads. We're going to go ahead and go with shoulders. Because of the steep grade, we don't want to create erosion issues. So we are going to go ahead and build a curb and gutter section. Uh, it's two twelve-foot wide lanes, and then we're going to have a four-foot at-grade, uh, median. Uh, it will be patterned concrete. We're not going to be encouraging passing, but we want to give people room. But the nice thing is, off the side of that road, there's going to be a ten-foot wide side path that people will be able to walk the entire way and connect to the neighborhoods. And then we will have crossings at Newton as well as the connections to Pine.
Oh, yeah. This road, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It is. Uh, I'm doing the words, we'll go to the pictures, and we'll flip to those pretty quick. So hopefully, uh, so the idea is we're going to be improving site distances and breaking distances for the roadway. Uh, there is an excavation and embankment required to address the unsafe hills and fill in some of the valleys in the roadway from Edison to Pine. On sheet four, uh, under Osage, uh, County, retaining walls and screening walls for the neighborhoods between Newton and Pine. Uh, new retaining walls in the vicinity of our excavation, uh, sections to create safe site distances. We're having to cut off almost seventeen feet of some of these hills and fill in some of these valleys by five and six feet to be able to get the proper, uh, safe stopping distance and site distances for these people that are pulling out of their neighborhoods. Uh, and we have different road sections, and we'll talk about that. We are going to have, uh, the rehabilitation of the north leg of the intersection of Edison and Gilcrees Museum Road. It's there by the commercial center, and we'll talk about that. It will remain a four-lane section. We are going to put in the residential areas from Edison to Independence, a three-lane section. We're going to be turning in some left turns. If you, if you're down there sometime during, after school or in the mornings, or people doing left-hand turns and people coming down off that hill. Uh, we have had rear-end accidents, we've had near misses. And having that dedicated left-turning lane for each of those neighborhoods down through there, we believe it will be an improvement and a safety addition. Uh, we will have an improved intersection at Newton and Gilcrees Museum Road, right there at the Gilcrees Museum, uh, and Gil, the facility itself. Um, we also are going to be tying into the new approach and building a new approach to connect with the Gilcrees Museum North Parking Lot that was completed by the Osage Nation under a partnering agreement with the City of Tulsa. Uh, and we greatly appreciate the Transportation Streets Group, uh, the Osage Nation on that. So on Osage County, there, the ten-foot side path will be on the east side of the roadway. There will be a five-foot sidewalk on the west side of the road between, uh, Newton and Pine. And there will also be a five-foot sidewalk down between Edison and Independent on the west side of the road that will connect the neighborhoods. But if you're going up and over the hill, we're going to be asking people to go to the side path that is on, going to be on the east side of the road. Um, so the excavation, embankment, and excess, uh, mineral materials. Our excavation, we're just in the Osage County area, seventy-five thousand, three hundred cubic yards. The embankment, or the fill that we're going to be moving that down in to fill in some of those deep valleys is about thirteen thousand, five hundred cubic yards. We're going to have excess material of about sixty-one thousand, eight hundred cubic yards of material. Our base plan is to place the excess material in Osage County. We understood that, respected that, and tried to do that in all our projects, uh, in Osage County. We just received the final artwork numbers that I just presented to you. And that incorporates the roadway, all the retaining walls, all the, all the drilling of the piers, all the drilling of the piles. We accounted for everything, any part of the excavation that we're moving on this project. Um, we do have over four hundred and fifty acres associated with the Gilcrees Museum area. Um, we have not decided the final location. It's yet to be determined, and that was depending and contingent upon us speaking with you and, and talking about preferences. There is the question, and we'd like to find out what the cost implications might be uh, to place the material, the sixty-one thousand outside of Osage County. That's an inquiry, that's not as much as our plan. We just want to know, uh, what the views are of this project.
Clear.
Let me, let me finish, let me finish.
Just outside of Osage County. I do, no, no place has been defined just yet. We just, I just don't know, and, and Lacy's been great to work with, but I, I just want to hear what your whole opinions are and what we need to, so we are open to that. Um, so let's see, on page six, just the project overview. We are finalizing the project plans. And I do have a set over here with me. We don't have the conformed set of plans. That happens when we advertise the project and after we have a pre-bid. But we do have the plans here for anybody that wants to take a look at them and look at the cross-sections, like to leave those with Lacy.
Please.
And we can also get a full set electronically to her that you guys can look at on your computers as opposed to printing off three hundred sheets of paper and looking at it that way. Uh, the project is a three hundred and ninety-five-page construction. Uh, completion is scheduled for the fall of twenty twenty-six. Um, right now, we are planning on, uh, opening the museum, uh, November first. I've been the project director on that program, a hundred and forty million dollar investment, uh, there in this area. If you haven't been there, you need to go see it. We, the view shed that you have from the amphitheater and looking out over the valley in the area, it's really, uh, it's, it's really a beautiful setting. This, uh, this project will provide safe, alternative modes of transportation connections with residential areas, the commercial centers, and the recreational trails. Uh, this project will impact local community and also regional users. We do plan on having this connected down to Charles Page. We will have the trail that comes up existing, Katy Trail, and take it on up north. And as you know, bicyclists are in the outside lanes a lot of times in these roads out in this area. Uh, we're going to be strongly encouraging them to use the path. Um, so following this, I have included just some aerial and street views, um, just for those of you that may not be quite as familiar with this. And we can flip to those page by page real quick. Lacy, just a minute, we won't go long, uh, on that. And then some renderings of what we're going to have. So on sheet seven, this is just kind of the overall, uh, view, the north arrow is to the northeast on this. But you can see we start at Admiral, which is south of four twelve, and it runs all the way up through QuickTrip, and it's that road on Gilcrees Museum Road all the way up. And we finish at Pine. And you can see the old, the Gilcrees Museum site there, uh, right there to the west of Pine. So on sheet eight, what we're going to do is we're going to start at the south end, and we're just going to kind of walk our way up, uh, as we go to Pine. And I'm going to do a mix of these bird's-eye views like this. And then also, we'll do some street views so you can see what the challenges we have in some of the areas. So on sheet eight, it's a bird's-eye view right over Admiral. Uh, we're looking to the north. At the top of the page is four twelve. You can see it's a four-lane facility. We already have a trail on the east side of the road that goes up, uh, and connects to Katy Trail. You see those, uh, off and on ramps on the south side of four twelve? Katy Trail is that area where the railroad track used to be, and you can kind of see it there in the trees. So going to sheet nine, this is the street view of looking up. You can see with the guardrail the entire way, there's not really a good, uh, it's, it drops off very quickly. Uh, there is a trail. We're going to just be doing street rehab in this area. We're not changing the curbs or its placement. On sheet ten, uh, we're getting up, we're sitting right at Katy Trail, looking underneath ODOT's bridge. Uh, these sidewalks underneath that bridge are going to remain, um, in that connection. So bicyclists can walk, um, the, traffic counts are well below thirty-five thousand, uh, vehicles per day. So they can do a share road in that outside lane if we need that. Going to sheet eleven, this starts at the bottom, has four twelve at the bottom of the, of the, uh, picture. And then up at the top, the east-west street, that is Edison. And that's the beginning of Osage County. But in the foreground, in the bottom left is QuickTrip, bottom right is, uh, McDonald's. There's a hotel back... There's a hotel back to the east of there, then there's the Bronz. Then we get into a residential area. We're going to be building from that ramp on the east side of the road, we're going to have a ten-foot wide shared path. There's a sidewalk across where McDonald's and Bronz are currently, but we're going to have a ten-foot wide path there. And you'll see a couple of homes as we get further up there. We've had to acquire some of those to have adequate safety space from the back of the street. So this is what it looks like, sheet twelve is what it looks like. McDonald's is off to our right, Quick Trip is to our left, and we're going up. We're just doing pavement rehab in this area and that sidewalk that you see in the foreground will now become a ten-foot wide facility. On sheet thirteen, we pick up and you're looking at Bronz at this location. Over on the west side of the road, you can see how these, this road has been built right up to historically, right up to these properties. We don't have an opportunity to put a sidewalk on that west side. So on the east side, we're doing, this is the east side only, that will be doing the pavement rehabilitation. Sheet fourteen, this moves up and what I want to draw your attention to is this house immediately in the foreground on your right. And the one you'll see further in the distance, those have been removed. We could not safely fit a side path through this particular area. We have acquired those. And then on the, on the west side of the street, directly across into your left, you'll see kind of an open lot. This has been a house of ill-repute, drug activity, et cetera. So when they got the opportunity to acquire it, we did so, we tore it down. The police department, the sheriff's department correctly supported that effort. So the next picture, this is the same concrete, you see where the homes have now been cleared in that area. We have, we then went one lot deep and we built new fence for those neighbors who were there. They had all chain link fence, but we wanted to provide some screening for those people and some privacy. So we built new fence along those two and then I'll show you further north. And that's starting right there at Edison or Eastern. Okay, this next house, another one, outbuilding, too close to do anything in this area. We did acquire this property as well. So on sheet seventeen, you'll see what that looks like now. And we did the same thing there, we went to the next house and built a screening fence for those folks. So we have a nice wide path for people to do and a safe place for families, et cetera, to walk up and do their activities. Okay, on eighteen, we're getting, we're in the south leg, looking north of the Edison and Gilcrees Museum Road. You see the commercial center in the northeast corner of Edison and Gilcrees Museum Road. And then you can see what the road starts doing as it heads up into the Osage building as we go further north. This is a view where Edison is right at the bottom, sheet nineteen. You can see that this is a four-lane section that runs to the, you know, past the driveways into the commercial center. That's going to remain a four-lane, we're just going to rehab that. At that point there, currently it heads down to a two-lane. And that's where we're going to widen to a three-lane so that we can have a, a safe turning lane for people coming in and out of those subdivisions. So if you look at sheet twenty, that goes a little bit further up the hill. The residential neighborhoods down at the bottom, all that two-lane that you're looking at is going to have three lanes. And we will have sidewalks now that will connect all those neighborhood streets out on, without having people walking in the grass or walking out on the, on the street itself. Then twenty-one, we move up the hill, well, let me go back on sheet twenty. Up at the very top, you'll see off to the right, this is the Gilcrees, I think it's Oakwood Pool. It's for the Gilcrees residential area, but that's the pool right there and that's Independence. And starting at Independence, we end at the three-lane. And on sheet twenty-one, this is what you see as we're looking north and where we get into. We're getting into more of a rural setting. Side path will continue over here on the right-hand side or on the east side. The west side, as opposed to sloping out and creating larger slopes, we're going to be building retaining walls as needed to hold that material so we minimize our excavation and cutting in to the trees on the west side. On twenty-two, this is coming up to the top of the hill and looking back down, you can't even see Independence. Independence also, when people are turning out, they can't see. And on this one, I can tell you, so I was flipping back and forth, there is a car just on the other side of the hill, just on the top of it. It's, we're looking south at this point, you can't even see it coming out this way. So this part of the road is going to drop about seventeen feet at this location. And then if you turn around and look north, we're right here basically at the corner of Newton and Gilcrees Museum. Gilcrees Museum facility is there to the left on the west side of the road with a rock wall that's, it's up there precariously. There are pieces that have, that have fallen out, we've had the ground end pieces, but we're going to fix that and I'll show you some pictures of that and stuff. Over here on the right-hand side, the Gilcrees, this drops off to the area. So we have our houses that are below the road, some of them, the top of the roofs are just even with the road. And then as we head towards Pine, it actually gets into a cut section and it goes higher. But we want to provide full screening and retaining walls for these folks. And I just want to, I'll show you this next one as we move a little bit further. We're about halfway through the Gilcrees Museum property. You see how it falls off into the people's backyards. And some of these folks have put up recent fences, but basically if you're up on that side path, we do not want people on that side path just looking into these people's backyards and losing that privacy. They haven't had it, but I think we're going to be able to improve that now as we start attracting more people to this area. So on sheet twenty-five, this is, we're back past Pine and we're looking back to the, to the south. And you can see how all of a sudden the houses become higher. So the retaining walls that we're putting in and the screening walls now all of a sudden become retaining the earth from the road. On the other side, it's retaining walls that are built in the people's yards and a screening fence in their backyards are lower. So it varies through here. Through this low area that goes into Stewart Park, we are building a sidewalk on that side all the way up the west side of the road, which is on your right. We're filling that in and we're providing more of a safe distance. We've had a lot of issues with this guardrail on the other end, they've done a lot of repairs on this. So we're hoping to spread this out and make it a safer intersection there at Pine and Gilcrees Museum Road. So the next pictures on twenty-six, you saw it, it's in existing condition. These pictures, and I'll talk about them, this is just the key map. We did renderings. We're having to buy some property from the property owners and they wanted to kind of see what we were doing exactly.
I just got a real quick comment, Chairman. I appreciate all this.
Go ahead.
It seems like you're making it a risk, and I'm very familiar with this.
Okay.
That highway goes all the way from airport straight to that point you're going to head. I was thinking somewhere for the benefit of the Osages, we have a fast lane coming off there, four twelve. But it seems like you're going to do a bike trail kind of thing. I'd like, maybe just pitch to say, we need a fast trail to that point.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you. Y'all can be patient, let him finish, please. Okay, and I hold that thought because we got, we just had a great meeting with OTA and ODOT last week. We're going to be addressing that. And I'll be happy to bring any drawings on that as well. So, so here's the renderings. This is the Temple property. If you're familiar with Edison and Gilcrees, or I'm sorry, Newton and Gilcrees Museum, they have a chamfered gate that's right off the corner on the southwest corner of that intersection. And we're moving that gate further up Newton. And this, this was the benefit for the Temple so they can see how we were moving their gate and getting them better access. It's not really been functional for them to come in at an angle through that area and then it will be a problem. Okay, this is on, this is also at the intersection of Gilcrees Museum Road and Newton. The first house in the northeast corner, she saw retaining walls and she saw the screening walls and she said, I really don't want those. I like watching the sunset come down that way. And I was like, okay, you're going to choose that, that's fine, I'll show you the other walls. So we just went with a retaining wall up and then pull Ameristar-type fence in that area so she can see it. And if you shift to look at sheet twenty-nine, this is going to be the view. We took this and rent modeled this, this is the view out of our kitchen window. And this is the, this is the view that she would like. So in the areas where the homes are down below, we are putting a decorative retaining wall. This is full concrete wall and we will be hand-staining this and then using Ameristar fence. If you look to the right on sheet twenty-nine, you see the solid screening fence that everybody else, they voted on and wanted. So we're doing that. She was the one on the corner and she wants it open, so we're going to, we were able to meet her requirements and she's pleased with that. So on sheet thirty, this is just kind of an example, in most people's backyards, they're going to have this wall at the back of their property. There's a concrete van and we put the concrete van on there for if a car does veer off Gilcrees Museum Road, they hit a concrete barrier. They're not going to drive through this screening wall and into the people's backyards. But then we have a six-foot screening fence on top, so they will never see anybody looking over their fence into their backyards as they go. Sheet thirty-one, this is at Independence. This is just kind of showing, we're always going to have this concrete stained wall and we're always putting a fall protection fence at the bottom of it. And we're keeping that all the way through the area, all the way up to Newton, and that's on sheet thirty-one. Sheet thirty-two, this is an area where it does continue to drop off. We're looking to the north and off to the right, but that's the side path. And we're going to try to keep as many trees and everything off the side. But you can see the curb and gutter and then you can see the at-grade, pigmented colored four-foot median that we're going to have. This is really going to be a super two, it's going to be a posted speed limit of thirty-five. As we've had on the super twos that we built with the Osage County, Osage Nation, speed is an issue. So we're hoping, this road doesn't go through, does not, it doesn't, it ends up in the northwest passagery dead ends. So we'll talk about that in a second. This is on sheet thirty-three, this is in the Gilcrees Museum. We're right across, the Gilcrees Museum yard is right to our left. Maybe the mausoleum is right in there, but this is what that's going to look like because we're going to have the, the walls all through that area. Sheet thirty-four, this is facing, we're facing east, this is what it's going to look like for the folks to be on the side path. Then on sheet thirty-five, this is at the corner. We're going to put the fence in, but this obelisk that you see, this pillar, that exists. We're going to leave all of the existing pillars in the northwest corner of Newton and Gilcrees Museum Road. But this is to give you a view of the new retaining wall that's going to go in front of the Gilcrees Museum property all the way down towards Pine. Up and down. And then on the right-hand side, you can see the screening fence that you will not see the neighbors' houses at all. You will not be able to see those. Sheet thirty-six is just another picture. We did get about eighteen feet tall with the wall, but the yard is even on the backside. So that is a fall protection fence, but the walls, it's about two feet above grade. This is an existing gate that we're going to remount there. This was just a historical gate that was taken out years ago, but we're going to restore it and put it. This is in the front yard of the Gilcrees Museum, just to provide some kind of a, a neat entrance. It will not be a driveway, it's, it's just an architectural element that everybody liked. On sheet thirty-eight, this is looking north. You can see the retaining walls over on the left-hand side. The yard undulates on the west side in the Gilcrees Museum yard, but this is the neighbors to the right. As you can see, you're not seeing the houses or anything, and this is the side path that runs up the east side of Gilcrees Museum Road. Sheet thirty-nine, this is the driveway into the, into the parking lot that was constructed by the Osage Nation. We're going to do the tie-ins with that, with that. Parking lot's been completed, we got rid of old railroad ties, we're able to put in some large gravity wall blocks. And again, that's been a great amenity. Sheet forty is just another picture of the screening walls. And you see on that side, the houses are a little bit higher and the retaining walls are actually repainting soil on the city side. This is by Stewart Park. This is that area where that guardrail is right, right along the intersection. And Stewart Park is down below and that's just what this is going to look like now. It's no longer going to be guardrail right at the back of curb. We're creating some space, it's going to be safe for the pedestrians as well as those just going down the museum. So with that, I thank you for the chance to present. If there's any more questions or comments on this or what's needed, we will sure get you the information needed on whatever it takes for us to be able to obtain a.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All the dirt that's going to be put in, put in place there, is that coming from the Osage County or is that coming from somewhere else?
No, that's all, those earth quantities that are shown on sheet, sheet five, those are all Osage County materials, sir.
Captain.
Do you know what the land area is in the Osage? How much land is being in the Osages? I mean, considering all the houses and the roads and everything, how much is being covered up, the land?
How much is being covered up?
I mean, that, how many acres are in the Osages that is actually part of the city?
What I will do, I'm going to transfer. I'm going to look at the existing impervious area and then what the proposed impervious area will be with this project. And I can give those numbers.
Okay, but I've talked about the whole, like, the whole block, whole area that's actually in Osage County.
Oh, everything north of Edison, Gilcrees Museum.
How much is it, sir?
Your slide said four hundred and fifty acres? No, this, this city owns four hundred and fifty acres or something above around the Gilcrees Museum. That's where we would spread this dirt out over somewhere in that area. I know Osage County runs everything north, so.
You know how, you know, know the area? Could you find that out for me, please?
So how much of Osage is in four-foot limits in the city of Tulsa?
Yes. I want to know, how much there is, how many acres?
Four, four blocks worth.
Oh, my apologies, Captain Wall, go ahead.
No, that was, that was my concern. I appreciate Mr. Zachary on the promotion of this. I've seen it, it was on the in-call when they talked about it twenty years ago. What I'm thinking about is number one, Greg Graujak, I'm with you, we should have got the off of four twelve. And then the tip program needs to extend that on route to thirty-six north. The question I have is that you're going to open up in November. I cataloged your last bulk items for the Osage. I'd like to visit with you and see how you can handle those folks, you know, I feel. But ju- just as a, I just want to see it. Since you had me catalog it.
Okay.
That's all I had, Chairman. As I said in my original question, that highway from there, it goes straight to that point and stops. Of course, you've got the, what is it, the Tisdale coming off downtown. But I think you're coming out from Gilcrees Expressway and then it's dead ends.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if there, if I could just ask, because we had a lot of conversations, there's nowhere else to build in Tulsa but in our area. So if we had that connection, I think that would help us as Osages, you know, utilize those land areas that we own.
Yes, sir. One hundred percent agree.
So that, anyways.
If we can pull up Google Earth, I could show you this.
I could take, because you're sitting right here, it's probably my only chance. Come on, get to say this to me.
Oh, no.
So that's, I want to make sure that that thought is out there, that, you know, we talked about those folks that are impacted in those areas. I'm very familiar with that location.
Okay.
I think the challenges in Gilcrees there, I'm sure they're making a lot of decisions because it's going to kind of beautify that area all the way across from. But if the Osages can jump in that conversation too, I think, I'd like to somehow get a solution.
Okay, very good.
Because I, we need quick access to that point. That's all I'm saying.
Do we have access to Google Earth on this? Let's start from here. So if I can, if I can address this real quick, just, we've met with the head of Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, ODOT, the design team, the Gilcrees, what we call the Northwest Passage, we call it that from, from Edison on up around connecting to the, to.
The Gilcrees Expressway.
Well, the Gilcrees Expressway coming on around to our extension of the Osage Express, the original Osage Expressway, Tisdale. And then goes across, we just, that was approved with OTA in this last access Oklahoma, this funding package. Moving forward was OTA's last bond package and that's how we built Edison down to I forty-four. The Gilcrees that got built, it's all elevated? Well, when we did, the Gilcrees. Well, when we did the Gilcrees Northwest Passage, our, I understand you all have fond feelings towards NEPA. We had a NEPA document that we had to do and we had the view shed of the museum. We wanted to protect that. So as opposed to, and if you're familiar with the Gilcrees, it's all elevated. It's elevated south of Edison, but that's because of flood plain and other issues. But if you've been on the Creek Turnpike in South Tulsa, it's excavated and down low. That's the way the Northwest Passage is going to be. And we have sight lines that we had to do as part of our NEPA. So when we're up on the upper floor or on the top of the amphitheater, you will not be able to see the expressway as it's going around within that particular area.
I'm just going to say this, from the airport to, to that expressway toward our location. And then the new Gilcrees coming from southwest Tulsa.
Yes, sir.
You can go seventy, eighty miles an hour in both directions. All of a sudden, it just stops near and here. And I think if we just connected somehow.
Yes, sir.
We could help, it would help us as Osages on our land and our property and that section.
Absolutely.
We've had this conversation a lot. I had in my past. And I just want to say that in our view, there's nowhere else to build in Tulsa in our area.
That is correct.
So.
So the engineers are engaged. We already have functional plans for that area. When Mr. Bernard J. Walker was the transportation, we did the super twos on Fifty-Seventh, Fifty-third and Thirty-first West. Worked with Scotty when he was county commissioner for the Osage County. We did a lot of, the best we could with the two lanes, but we know this road, the road fully built out has a price tag as of last week of eight hundred and seventy-seven million dollars. In our meeting, our value engineering meeting last week, we cut down, we got, still got a four-lane facility. We have the frontage roads. And we took down some of the flyover interchanges. And we are now down right around three hundred and twenty-four million, which the Gilcrees to the south costs us three hundred and thirty million. So we're in the ballpark. So we are working to continue the Gilcrees Expressway up and around, connecting to Tisdale, Osage Expressway and on over to Seventy-Five.
Yeah, I agree, but you got a couple of things. One is, is all this work being conducted on the dising right-of-way or do you require any new right-of-way?
We had to acquire some additional right-of-way, yes.
Any of them in Osage County?
Yes, sir. All of it, all that we had to acquire, what, we acquired some in Osage County, yes, sir. And in those blocks, we're having to take the road down seventeen feet. We had to get into that neighborhood that just lies just south of Newton and the west side of Gilcrees Museum Road. It's residential, it was residential house.
Well, we need to know, if you did any excavation in Osage County, you'd need to get a permit from us to, for any excavation.
That's what this is. This, this is all the excavation that is required for this project. Alls, any drilling, storm sweaters that we're putting in, et cetera. That's encapsulated on page five.
What we need, what we'll need to know, we need to start tonnage, right? Is that how we measure our excavation? How much tonnage of material you'd be excavating?
Yes, sir.
Where will it go? What will you do with it? That, those sort of things. That's what, you'd need to get a permit from us to do that. And then before we, after we are finished with this particular project, I want to ask him about the earlier subject that you heard us talking about.
Yes, sir.
Up on Reservoir Hill in a possible city of Tulsa facility, maybe? So I'd like, I'd like you to follow up with that also.
That's the one. That's kind of where I was heading. We do the permit and I understand that, oh, you're going to put it on your own land. But if it's a value of that process, that's a little different than you just dumping it out there. So I think with the permit, the application should be looking and review that. Any inadvertent effort will come under one oh six, back for it, things of that nature. I don't think you're going to hit nothing, but I, every once in a while, I'm wrong. But that, that will be it when you expand.
Yes, sir. Our main, our, we're maintaining a fairly narrow pathway through there. We have right now the highest down there at Quick Trip, seven thousand vehicles per day. Up at Pine, we're getting up to nine hundred and thirteen hundred per day. So when we originally envisioned this project in twenty thirteen, we were looking at it as a secondary arterial, a five-lane facility. And with the Gilcrees on and we realized that that connectivity, we're not going to be picking up other than just more local traffic. And a two-lane facility that is widened, they can carry up to thirteen thousand vehicles per day. And I don't believe that that, at this point, is necessary to do it. But I can give you the right-of-way that we've acquired, but these numbers in here, the cross-sections that you'll see in the plans, it accounts for all excavation and embankment. So what I'm hearing is we need a specific placement location and how it's going to be placed.
Yes, sir. For, in what we call a two-one, two-one-four permit. That number comes from a federal regu, a federal code of federal regulation.
It's on the agenda.
Pardon?
It's on.
I know, I'm telling you.
So, Counselor, on a table list to another, another meeting?
Yeah. Just to get that information, Chairman. We just need that information.
I need a motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to table it until we get the information requested.
Second, Counselor. Any discussion? Any discussion? Off the vote.
Second Chair, Tishwalla.
For the next meeting. We have that information. We have this information to the next meeting, Mr. Zachary. I'm going to. It'll be the first Friday in August. Okay, the permit numbers and those, can I just get that from you, Lacy?
Two-one-four.
Two-one-four permit, is that just?
Two-fourteen.
A two-fourteen is what the Bureau of Indian Affairs.
Off the vote.
Second Chair, Tishwalla.
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin.
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yes.
Chairman Reddigl.
Yes.
Councilman Reebard.
Yes.
Councilman Chakalpur.
Yes.
Councilman Waller.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse.
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Mr. Zachary.
No chance. I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, could you tell us what you know regarding the subject that you heard us talking about on Reservoir Hill? Are you familiar with any development by the city of Tulsa in section, the northeast quarter, section twenty-seven, twenty north, twelve east, which is straddles the Tisdale Expressway, both on the west and the east side over at Reservoir Hill?
Yes, sir. We have coordination meetings with Development Services. And in my history of knowing, that we have to get permits from this group. I informed Development Services, there is another, there is another property just to the east of the Tisdale that is being developed that is a, is residential subdivision. And there is also a clinic or something else associated with that. We also heard about Reservoir Hill. So on, what I will do, I am going to pass on Lacy's contact information and direct any work, and we've told them this, any work, they're supposed to put that review comment on the plans, they have to pay a permit through the Osage Minerals Council. And they were informed of that, that was a reviewed comment, said on that one. I don't know about this one at Reservoir Hill. I heard there was going to be some subdivision, but I will pass that along to Mr. Skates, who is the director of that department, to make sure that comment gets.
A subdivision or a medical place?
I don't know. I've heard the development on Reservoir Hill. And our interest is we're protecting our buried water pockets up there. You're protecting your oil and gas and mineralize. So I will pass that on as soon as I get back. But I'm going to give them Lacy's number and email and we will get you all in contact with the developer in this planning on doing that effort.
Thank you, Mr. Zachary.
The first, the meeting is, the next meeting is on August the first and August the twentieth, in the middle of the month. First and the twentieth of August.
Okay. Are you, August first may be a little, little tight? But I, but we'll.
As long as she has the information, if she can, I grant, we can.
Please, you're soft, because you're soft.
We give it her, she'll, she'll, she'll.
All right, thanks for, thank you, Mr. Zachary. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Next, I need to do a new business, Chief of Staff, CPA College, Councilman Waller.
Yes, that's cool. Chairman and Counsel, I'd like to entertain the, a motion at this time to help with our Chief of Staff. When we hired these folks, we've asked them to always entertain their education, take care of this as a employee of the council. And she has done everything in the last eleven years. I know she's busy, but I would like to ask you that we've got to, she's got to go in for her CPA, the test. And at this time, I'd like to ask our counsel to help her with that cause.
I have to go.
Yes, as a motion.
No, wait, wait a minute, I've got a question.
Now.
Off the vote, each second. Second, Councilman Redcorn, now discussion.
Will this re, include the review course if she has to take it because if she needs it, she needs to have it? I mean, you know, seriously, they're all, they're human segments. If you need a review course, they're just as expensive to take in the test. So, you know, we're talking, you know, I don't care. I think we need to help in those things itself.
I know we need to help, head right.
Yes.
Single mother of three.
She's an Osage, I know that.
Eleven years.
Yeah, and I, I figured the neighborhood, maybe five thousand.
What, what are the costs of that?
The tests alone are one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-six cents.
Is that for each segment?
That's total.
For, all four segments?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Let's cover that.
Okay. But if she needs that course, you know.
Then she can come back to us and.
Yeah, because she, she needs to take it.
You want me to put it up to you, that's a hundred dollars?
Yeah. Because the person can eat that honey, say so.
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Councilman Redcorn.
If I could remind everyone, we, here's our accounting report.
Oh, we just sold some pie.
I read it. And no one should, so maybe Lacy can jump in and we can have that torch on to her.
The Becker, which is one of the better ones, price is twenty-six, twenty, no, three thousand ninety-nine.
That's the cost of the test?
No, that's the cost of the.
Review.
Review. The test is eleven twenty-five.
So you're definitely at about four thousand dollars, five thousand dollars.
That's okay. Forty-two, twenty-four, fifty-six.
Men the motion to reflect that.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yeah, I'm just curious, is the Osage Nation grants in scholarships? Do, will, does this apply for any of that?
They will reimburse up to so much for the test, not for the.
True. Well, we might, we might want to do that if we do this. That's all I have, Chairman.
Any other comments?
Counselor Redcorn.
Off the question.
Off the question.
Councilwoman Irwin.
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yes.
Chairman Reddigl.
Yes.
Councilman Reebard.
Yes.
Councilman Chakalpur.
Yes.
Councilwoman Waller.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse.
Yes.
Second Chair, Tishwalla.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Counsel. Going, getting ready to go into exactly the audience and we might be in there a little while. And we thank you for your presence and thank you for your attendance and need a motion to go in somewhere.
Second.
There you go, Councilman Redcorn. Off the vote.
I have a question. Got a question.
Go ahead.
What's the letter to the Secretary of Defense Executive?
We discussed that.
We've discussed it with our chair.
Remember that, we discussed that.
Oh, okay.
I think some of these topics should be in an open session for our shareholders to hear. We can do it and we can get on to it.
Off the vote.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yes.
Chairman Reddigl.
Yes.
Councilman Reebard.
Yes.
Councilman Chakalpur.
Yes.
Councilman Waller.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse.
Yes.
Second Chair, Tishwalla.
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin.
Councilman Irwin.
Councilwoman Irwin. Motion passes.